Start in. Sorry, folks, for starting. Appreciate it. Welcome. We're going to get the city council. City of North Platte and city council regular session meeting Monday, August first, two thousand and twenty-two at seven oh eight. Please stand and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Go forward.
Thank you. Counselor Page?
Here.
Counselor Kendall?
Yes, here.
Yes. Counselor Martinez?
Here.
Counselor Pippen?
Here.
Counselor Sheldon?
Present.
Counselor Smith?
Here.
And Mayor Lenihan?
Here. Thank you. Item five on our agenda is the consent agenda. So tonight we have the city council regular session agenda. The July eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two city council minutes and resolution twenty-one ninety-eight appointing Donna Medica to, did I hope I said that correctly? To the library board for a term through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes that we need to be aware of? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion on the table by Counselor Martinez, seconded by Counselor Smith. Any discussion? Hearing none, others in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion carried. Thank you. Item six is public comments. So this is the time that we wish to hear from the public on anything not on the agenda. Is there anyone in Jesse Bay's hall that would like to speak? Anyone that signed up to speak, Lori?
No.
Anyone provided anything via email?
Nothing prior to the meeting tonight.
All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, one, I forgot to say, good to see everybody. We have full council in, in, in the building tonight. Yes.
Would it be an idea to have our since our library person here to introduce herself or?
Donna is here. Oh, we just, she was disappointed by you all. Thank you very much.
Donna is famous. She's our celebrity on the library board because she was in the Washington Post in a photo
about our plans walking around. So. Yeah, so we're, we're very pleased to have her and Donna not only uses the library, but has worked in the North Platte's library and the Hillsborough library in the past. So knows a lot about that. So, thank you.
Item number seven, A, on our agenda is resolution twenty-one ninety-nine is the contact with process design for design services for a public works facility.
Yes, this is a next step in advancing a public works facility. Recall, there is acreage beside water reservoir is out on West Union Road for a public works facility slash emergency operations centers that would be part of the science having some of the meeting capabilities for for that for, for gathering here. Back in two thousand and twenty-one, kind of landed on a for site plan on design for that, that space and working with an architect back then. The engineer, the, the visible insider, the public work staff. Andrew as well, kind of looking at building itself and sort of the ingress, the egress and performance that would go into that. Around that same time, probably a year ago, that we were in form of a state, we got a five million dollar grant, a lot of refunds to those facilities. So that was great news. That might be available until late two thousand and twenty-three, but we, we want to keep this project moving along. And so we can use SDC funds to pay for a public works facility. That will be SDCs, you can see which, which portion of that. But this, the city in three J went out for proposals from different architects to take this building and design to the next phase of junior schematic design. From there you go into design development. There you have your final construction development, construction documents and video. We're trying to keep this on track to have the project ready in early two thousand and twenty-three. And we've been working with three J. We got three proposals from three different architects, kind of ranging in sizes. And what their experiences, wanting different building types and public buildings and some commercial buildings too. Ultimately, process architecture was the proposal bid that, or the proposal we accepted. And the principal is here tonight to talk about these sort of architecture or process. I mean, process steps in the process. I don't think that they, what I call the names, but some of those things, because I'll be frank. I've done boat harbors, I've done water reservoirs, I've done, you know, packed paths and trails, but I've never done an office building. So this is a new one for me too. So I'm kind of on the other side here to explore this. I need to do a lot of planning conditions to see how they get all the major, all these development and design steps to what they bring to land use. That's where we are. So this is good for me too, because there was a lot of this too. But we live on a process because, as you might say later on, part of their, part of the main is to help break down the process for clients of a little easier to understand. But where we are is moving forward, moving forward with a schematic design. I get some of the design awards in here that I included in the staff report. So that we can stay on track to have that done by, you know, fall two thousand and twenty-two, moving to design development. And then that's going to be right at the first quarter of two thousand and twenty-three. So if there are any questions, I'm happy to take them or Jason here could as well, but you know, three J, if you're doing this civil engineering elements. This is going, going through a lot of, you know, getting more of a fire and chemical engineering building, you know, those sorts of elements. And one thing I noted, we talked about previously, but the previous kind of concept was just a single story building or really going to explore putting a second story on, on the office. Because that would just, we've got a foundation, you know, we're going to grow. It would be the newest to, to do that. And then the rest of the building, then the rest of the building would be about the same type, because we'd be kind of tall ones for bay doors for equipment anyways. So that's kind of a big design change that we'll be going.
Question?
No. Go right ahead.
Okay.
Go right ahead. Go right ahead. Counselor Kendall, then I'll ask my question.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, so you have it. It's not a concept. It's the, how big a building you're going to build. But the money we got, we got money, but we don't have to spend it all, right? I mean, it's, who knows? But I'm just curious, what size building are we looking at?
Jason, do you remember? It was about ten?
It was, oh, ninety-five hundred. It's pretty good concept, but that didn't include the second floor.
Yeah.
Does it come up here to the, to the channel?
Yeah, I think that twenty-five hundred was office space, right?
Pardon?
Yeah, twenty-five hundred was office space.
Right. Yeah, I mean, a lot of it's going to be.
You can send stuff here. Thanks to Andy or Lori just to make sure. Just introduce yourself. That would be great.
Sure. Good evening. Jason Carum, Principal of Process Architecture Design. To answer the question.
Yeah, you've seen the site, no doubt.
Yeah, yeah. Been up to the site, looked at the preliminary kind of concept plan before, and it totals ninety-five hundred square foot building, hundred thirty-five feet by seventy feet. And a portion of that roughly, I think it was twenty-five hundred square feet, was single story office. And then since then, I, we're outside of the.
Andrew.
Andrew.
Andrew, Brian.
And we talked about a second story and kind of confirmed the program as well too. At one point it was, I think the original design was proposed for like a mass ply, which is a new approved building type that's allowed. Cross limited timber, you've probably seen that avenues as well too, mass plies. Along the same vein, but we would look, we talked about different strategies for, you know, steel building or mass ply or whatever. That's kind of what we do with schematic designs. We look at all those different breakdowns and then get some costs for, for what that looks like.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, I had a question, I guess maybe a clarifying question. So I read your outline and then I read the PCS structural solutions outline. And I know that, that it says a single story facility building in PCS, but I know that you're talking about, you know, a second story. So I just want to make sure that the two groups are on the same page, because this said single level, but it was my understanding that you're looking at two levels.
Yeah, and I saw that in their proposal too, because I think that another piece, they did have a multi-level in there. So I'll confirm with them that it was. Adding a second level at this point, like I talked about, makes a lot of sense, because you're, you're already, you already have the structure, you already have the foundation. The bay spaces for the equipment is already kind of a double height space anyway. So it makes a lot of sense just to expand that into that area. So I can make sure that that's included in those code as well too.
Okay.
And even if, you know, I'll double check and then it, it might move the needle a little bit north, you know, maybe a thousand or two thou, a thousand dollars or maybe for their proposal, but it's not going to be a substantial increase. But at this level, I think should be okay to keep it the same.
And then Andy, this is a question for you. Do we have like building standards or standards in our code for commercial buildings or, you know, buildings such as this?
Yeah, we have design standards.
Sorry, thank you. I know I forgot a word in the sentence I was thinking, because I, you know, then I was thinking green, you know, I'm thinking environmentally and will you take that sort of factor in this process too?
Well, you want to?
Yeah, well. Yes, the, the good thing, yeah, go ahead, because anything that's, you're looking at, it's going to have a cost impact, but we'll look at that. I mean, that's part of what CLT is. It's one of those kind of options you can investigate. I mean, you read certification, I can, I can read that on that, on what the cost and the benefit ratio is, but yeah, you, you know a lot more than I.
Yeah, so you, you, I mean, at this level too, I mean, we, schematic design is kind of a level to ask all those questions. So we're going to be a little bit of program confirmation. So we could say, you know, do you want to lead silver building? Do, you know, sometimes you'll work with institutions, I would say, they want to lead equipment. So they won't actually go and get the certification, but will meet certain standards to have a lead building. There's certainly other certifications you could go after too, but CLT is a, is a, it's a big push right now for CLT buildings are, a lot of its local here, I think. I think three of the, maybe two of three, I can't remember, it's two or three of the CLT plants are in Oregon too. So it's a lot of it's very local. So that gets you the five hundred mile credit that you need for clean buildings.
Lead is an environmental certification.
Leadership is a thing.
Energy.
Energy efficient design. Yeah. And then there's different tiers that you can achieve, but there's a cost associated with that certification. But certainly something we can discuss at this level too. And then, you know, some things that come up in schematic design, it's, schematic design is as much of a programming phase as it is a design phase. So we can ask questions, you know, are there concerns with wildfires and things like that? Can we have materials that, you know, aren't flammable? What's the roof look like? Is there, you know, gray water capture earthquake certainly is kind of standard in the code. But you can go up to higher levels, you know, do you want this to be a, there's an importance factor that a designer, a little scientist can relate to. But I mean, at this point, it's, we can, I like to use even early phases like SD to put everything in there that you want, and then we can get a price and then we just pull back if we need to, or, you know, we find out that it's actually more cost effective. I have a larger building, but that's what the budget is too. But it's kind of a dreaming phase SD, so we can kind of do what we want based on what, what you guys want to achieve.
Counselor Page?
Yeah, when I dream this, I kept on getting like breaking, I'm going back to the one story and it can be split up to two. We're getting these messages here. We're just saying these messages here, because there's one story is going to be mentioned. It should be two stories. You have the, the foundation's there, you have, you have one roof. Maybe in the future we can expand. That's waste of money. Why don't you just do, why, why even consider one story? I mean, why even spending time on this? And then okay, two story, and here's what two stories look like. Just the two stories. Because that's, I mean, is there a compelling reason besides the cost, not going to double the cost, right? But there's more. You may, two, two stories. You may have to redo a city hall, so you need to respect, it seems, it seems like a no brainer to go for two and not think about one and waste the effort on that. Just go two all the way without even like, well, here's one story and hit with two, but like, it's two, what? But take, in my mind, I don't know what's, I, it was, it was, I kept on going back, like, why, why, why are we doing one? That's, that's like crazy talk. Why are we doing one? So.
Yeah.
I don't know. Is it crazy talk? I mean, I, I know it's cheaper, probably, I don't know how much cheaper, probably, I'm thinking of third, cheaper to not, to do one story than two, but we should really do two and not have one as an option. Because that's going to waste effort, waste cost, waste time. And that's what I'm thinking. But you're, you're the architect.
No, no, and I agree. And the, the original concept was for a one story and I were at this point going to look at two, but Terry, to her comment, I think the structural engineers proposal will have to go and refine that a little bit. It should be a two story.
Yeah, yeah. So I, I tried to go back, like, why one? Why one?
Yeah.
Actually, we can build two. Why one?
Yeah, well, why one is because we just were starting to what had been done before.
Yeah.
When we met outside and talked a few weeks ago, we said, why, I remember going to Hillsborough, you know, touring their public work facility, touring Sherwood's. Everyone decided to build, you know, for the future and the cost is just incremental. So, yes, don't worry about that. A second story is going to be part of the design unless it is.
I would have a wait.
Astronomical. It's possible. Yes.
Right?
Clearly we want two.
Yeah, sure. Counselor Martinez?
I just want to confirm, this is going to be on West Union, though, correct? Not where you mentioned where City Hall or your timeout, huh?
Yeah, yeah, I was just saying office.
This facility is not off West Union.
Yeah.
Just to confirm, so we're going to use how many square feet for office space? Was that?
Twenty-five hundred per floor plate, so that it'd be five thousand all with, with the second story, twenty-five hundred per floor.
And then we plan on, Andy, we plan on moving everybody over there?
Public people or? Public works.
Just public works or?
Public works, but that would, you know, expanding to the second floor and adding more office space means in the future, a city engineer. It's where a planner, planning manager could go, kind of that, folks that are in the building and community development, I think that would be that.
It seems like you'd move them over there sooner than we'd come up with a city hall, move them back or something, because right now I think you, Lori and all them are kind of squeezed in there.
They are.
You're not?
They are.
I like my office made. It's okay. We, you know, we don't throw things at each other. It's all good.
So I, I just was wondering if that's what we're going to do. Move some people over there.
It, it's, it's possible. Yeah, I mean, we could, we could explore that, you know, if there's a second story, like if five more people in there, we need to buy some time. So, yeah, we have the possibilities.
And at, at this level of design too, I mean, you could look at it with an internal stair that's all inside and, you know, or an external stair for two different departments and they don't need to be tied together. I mean, all that's kind of in, in that schematic design, wish list, we can kind of do whatever, whatever makes the most sense or.
Any other comments?
I have a question. And that's related to other structures you built that are similar in the past. I'm not familiar with the firm, not that I necessarily need to be, but do know a little bit about these types of facilities. And so I'm interested in what you've done before and what examples could we look at? I know we get sketches from what we're getting, but I want to have some sense of, you know, what your, what your experience is.
Yeah, that's a good question. So I'd say the closest building recently was at Liberty High School. There's an agricultural, agricultural building that was built on the site of a, a mall building. That'd probably be the closest one in size and scale. And that was a metal frame building, two classrooms, really high bays, and they were doing some agricultural work in that building as well too. In addition to teaching. But our firm is, my firm is about a two-year-old firm at this point. So when I was doing that, I was at another firm that was doing all of it. I was a project manager for Hillsborough School District, so the additions to collect the high school, Hillsborough High School. I was a project manager for all those. Since we've been a firm, we've done multi-family, some public work done, newer for schools on there, additional work at Hillsborough School District. What else? Couple of projects in Troutdale, so they're kind of a broad range of projects. But I'd say the closest one, if you, you know, a close example would be the active agricultural building for, would be high school.
Any questions or comments?
I have one question about, if they need to adopt. I'm still missing for that single story. We're going to do two of them now with a, a, a one story and a two story. We're just going to go strictly to the two stories and all this money into one story.
Oh, yeah, the design. So, so it'd be, I mean, the whole design process is pretty iterative. So the original design that came out a couple of years back. We would evolve that design to, to have the two stories. And moving forward, it would be a two-story design. Yeah.
So, yeah, so what's your feel on this proposal per square foot? What do you, what do you visualize the size of the building? Is that, that look realistic? Because, you know, we don't have a budget of, of many dollars, so it could be less. Shouldn't be more. So I'm just curious, where are you adding that?
For, for our proposal or for construction?
The construction cost.
Construction cost? So I think that came up.
Four ninety-seven it was, I think. Something like that.
Oh, for, for.
Yes, yeah.
For the, for the, for the design fee.
Right.
Oh, a design fee. So, yeah, we ended up doing two proposals. We did us just a proposal for schematic design. And I think that's the one that we're, we're just talking about that one. But I did bring the other one too. So I mean, if you're looking at all, all in costs for everything. Yeah, we had four fourteen, four hundred and fourteen thousand, and that included all the architectural pieces, interior design, record drawings, and then I had structural engineer, mechanical, electrical and plumbing, which is what M E P engineering is. And then we had also brought a cost estimator on our team as well too. So at this point, the four fourteen, I don't believe it would go higher than that. And even at, at an SD phase, I mean, even, even if you add square footage, you add a second story or anything like that, it's early enough where if we can capture that in our.
Okay.
In our PD.
All right.
But then the, and the cost per square foot too, I mean, this was just based on, this is for an instruction cost. And at four seventy, I just did four point five million divided by the square footage. And I think that that's well within reason for, for this type of building.
I know one thing, Jason, you is there something like in Oregon, is there a one percent for green energy fee? That one percent project cost? Said, okay.
Not that I'm familiar with.
I, I thought there was for public buildings.
There's, there may be, but it could, we could look into that. I mean, it's, it wouldn't be that hard to hit, especially if you're, if you're right on the gate looking at this mass ply.
Yeah.
I mean, or, you know, water capture or anything.
Something bad, yeah.
It could be built.
Or solar day, yeah, in windows.
All right. Any other comments or questions?
I have one quick question. For, for funding or for the design committee, knowing that the grant hasn't come in yet and we're going to take it from SDC funds, will we just put that back into SDC funds once we receive the?
Yeah, we can do it in a fund transfer later on. Yeah, so the public works building itself is going to be used as new fund, kind of like a of the water pump, the street fund. This would be a new fund, so we can have all separate accounting and you just do it in your fund transfer to those different SDC funds for the money transition.
Okay, thank you. All right, so there are no other questions or comments. This item will need a motion to adopt the solution twenty-one ninety-nine.
I'm here to adopt resolution twenty-one ninety-nine to approve an agreement with process architecture for the public works facility schematic design.
I'll second it.
All right, we have the first on the table by Counselor Payton, seconded by Counselor Page. Any discussion? I have one comment on the signature page on the agreement. Berman's last name is incorrectly spelled. B E R, it should be B A R. I can only comment. All right, any other comments, discussion? Hearing none, others in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion carried. Thank you, Jason. Look forward to it.
Yeah, thank you. I'm, I'm sure. Yep, so you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so now we're just going to pretty much slide into the rest of the agenda. It's fairly light. Andy, your city manager reports.
Uh, yeah, actually, a couple of things I was going to mention that's part of this. Basically, okay, let's see, let's just circle back. So I have the line, I was just in the county on Monday, six PM, senior center. Okay. Couple of things. One was in my report on Friday, but it's in this packet here. It's League of Oregon Cities looking for legislative priorities. We've done this before where we took, took some time, everyone kind of talking about theirs and it was a process that took, took a while. So what am I do is just reach out. If you want to give me your top five electronically, I can send out this document in that separate email, but it's in this packet. And I think there's twenty or so priorities that these LOC committees came up with, kind of five different categories. If you send me what your top five are, I'll find out something to aggregate or whatever, kind of figure out, share back with the council what the, what the top five might be for the, the city council, rather than taking just a lot of the time, looking at, we're just trying to do that electronically. And then I'll write it by before we submit it, submit it, we get around to it until August nineteenth.
So that's due by Friday, right?
August fifteenth. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so, yeah, there's that. There is the U T V pack meeting this Thursday at six PM here. Before that, a full night hour, six PM here, but outside. The garlic festival, you get that. Cody Brown started this morning, Public Works, sort of the operations tech. Go fit right in. It's good to have a little pair of hands. I know those guys appreciate that. And then the only other thing is I think it's going to be next week, there's the folks, since I've got the, the announcement, they're going to be the far west twenty year site, on West Union Road. Looking to have, they were in meeting and doing these applications.
Um, I was going to ask you, you know, there are probably other folks in town that might want to participate in that, so.
That would all want to do.
Okay.
So.
Can we post that? I want to post it in just in case other folks want to go through that. I mean, I might want to.
Yeah.
Listen to it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I, I get a little conflicted, conflicted, you know, posting an applicant's neighborhood meeting for, for everywhere, because I think that should be their job. The only reason we did it at the GLA is because that's a city-owned piece of property. We have a big piece in that. We can, we can do that though. We could probably do a Facebook post or something like that. Appreciate that.
I can, I mean, I can certainly share it on my Facebook. I'm, I'm, you know, that's what I intend to do, because I thought that other people might find that interesting.
Okay, yeah, we should, we should probably come up with that if we want to do it for all of them. I just, yeah, someone else leaving one out, someone will get that. You know, I didn't know about this, you know, because I mean, it's crazy. You know, I didn't know about this, you know, because I mean, it's, for anything is, you know, a small subject, you know, somewhere. You know, I forget, but then sometimes it doesn't take much for neighborhood meeting to occur. But if that's, if that's what you would like, I just need to know that way, work out, you know, for all. And again, we don't receive every neighborhood meeting notice, yeah. They were kind enough, this is one, typically we don't receive one. It's unless it's city owned, it's property here.
Well, I'm thinking if it's in our packet, I mean, it's public documented, it's in our packet, it's already publicized, you know? And it does say that they registered or attended.
Yeah, I would say, yeah, go forward, we could go post on it. That was really an idea of the council.
No, I understand. Any comments or questions for Andy regarding this report? All right, any city council reports? Councilor Smith?
I guess, oh my God, National Night Out is Wednesday, is any city council going to show up?
Yeah, I'll probably be there.
Just curious. I'm cooking hot dogs again. There's two of us. I don't have three more, so I guess. Passing them out.
Yep.
It would be nice if we had some city council passing a lot of those.
Oh, yeah.
You were out there last year.
It's over here, right?
Yes.
Let me see if I can get my kids to go stand up, seven to six, so can you get them five o'clock? Probably doable, I mean, it depends if my, there's a, there's a current fire that, listen.
Um, well, I I know that the chief has been organizing that, and I also know that Cindy Smith, your wife has been working with Patty to organize that as well, right? That's the food part of it.
Yeah, because I think there was supposed to be a spreadsheet, but there wasn't. But I remember how many hot dogs we did last year, it was two hundred and six or whatever.
Yeah, I thought Patty had worked with them to do that.
So, yeah, I guess this next year we need to put a spreadsheet together.
I can do that, it was, Sarah always kept stuff, and the last two years with COVID. Well, we didn't have it the year before last, I think.
She was supposed to put one together last year.
And she may have, but she may have put it in one of her files that wasn't accessible by everyone else, I don't know. I went back and I found some information from seventeen and eighteen and, you know, kind of tried to estimate from, from that and from what I saw last year.
Hopefully this time we'll have one. Because I think my wife still put them together.
We will, we'll make sure it's all properly documented.
Um, any other council reports?
Just one more thing.
Sure.
The baseball game. We signed up and I guess I thought we were going to get all the same location, but they had three spots that you could correspond to there, so.
It was my understanding they were all going to be in the general area of one section.
We only had three pick from. We picked companies, so.
Okay.
Which one?
Uh, August seventeen.
What section, where are you?
Under the cover.
Oh, okay.
I think it's two down.
So in the first baseline or behind the dugout, but no, behind the.
No, we're not going, we're going on the, between catcher's mound and third base.
Okay, so you're on the third baseline.
That's where the company seats were.
Okay.
Okay.
Because they had that or wrong, which I'm not going to sit in, for the hard metal seats. I don't do either.
Okay. So let's bring your cushion.
I do that too.
All right, so you're, just so we know about where you are and then we haven't purchased your tickets yet, that's where.
Yeah.
We can all sit in the same area, yeah.
Are we waiting for the, for parade for the golf?
I am not going to be in town for that, so I don't know, would you like to organize that?
No. I don't think, I don't know, I don't know about it.
People have turned in applications, there's a, you can find the application on the Fund Stinks website or on.
No, I don't, I'm not going to, it's going to be doing like a big heat right, I want to jump on there with you. That's what, that's what I want to do.
That's a question for Patty, because most people, they send their applications to her.
Okay.
I mean, we've gotten one against the Washington Fosse, so I don't think they want you to jump there, I don't think you'll be there.
Why don't you come to ours?
But I know last year, I know last year, Councilor Kendall and myself, we coordinated it, but I I'm not here to coordinate that this year, so.
So you're fresh.
If you want to take that on or.
I'd like to see if the tracker, why did you wear it? I don't know that I'd have to, it's already read, so I'd have to find out.
He has a nice, a nice charger to drive and.
Challenger.
Their challenger, sorry.
I got the charger too, so.
Yeah.
Both of them.
Yeah.
Can we do a burnout like you did on the floor, you know?
I'm going to tell you what you can and cannot do. You make that a choice yourself. But if you want to do something like that for the festival, for the, for the parade, just now you have to fill out an application and make sure you get that back to Patty Burns. And it would be nice if there was representation in the, in the parade, that would be awesome.
We have metal signs that says city council that put on a vehicle to wind it up, so.
Right.
And any other council reports?
Just wanted to add, kind of on August fourth, from forty-seven P M, the Cornelius Public Gallery, Rob Drakes. He's the city manager for Cornelius, they'll be doing a farewell send off party for him. So just thought, put it up. I know I've been around him from Corningville and being a neighboring city as well, just good to just send him this farewell. He has nothing but great things to say about Andy, so no pressure to please flip that.
I'll be further interview committee next week. Ross Gray, yeah, I'll see him on Wednesday. He's definitely, I consider him a mentor, he's one of the best. Friend, I consider him a friend, one of the best. My best manager contact I had here. I'll meet each other lots of, I certainly appreciate that, thanks for mentioning that.
Thank you for mentioning that, he's been a good champion too for us. Thanks.
Question, do you have a replacement for him?
No, they're interviewing next week. He's a part of the team interviewing, he's not an interviewee. Because I know the mayor of Cornelius has been trying to, he's actually been threatening all the mayors that he's coming for our city managers possibly, and so if that's the case, his head's on that.
So Andy's not meeting with him for that purpose now.
I could have one thing, but the mission, I could have, before we interview, it's just that, at the O C D C, maybe these bioplasms can happen. What some councils do, I kind of like this, I'm not going to compel anyone to do it, but I'm. You know, we've accomplished quite a lot and we just kind of come to our meetings, do our business, go. But I don't know, sometime maybe we could just, in lieu of a meeting or outside of a meeting, just have a barbecue, something like that. Anyone who wants to have a nice yard or some volunteer, we can bring something. But I I think that would be nice, we could have department heads there, who brings their spouse or family, because all those sticks it's along everyone. So I think it'd be nice if we don't talk about the city stuff, we can just talk about anything else.
Yeah, I'm down with that, I got a bounce house, we just got a bigger bounce house for the kids. Also, there's six hundred pounds inside, so. So we have it in my house, I'll talk to the wife, we'll also date, and I'll do about videos that all.
I'll talk to you, attorney, let them know, and if there's anything we have to do to legally make that happen. But I just, I kind of thought of a night here to celebrate, especially to go do this levy thing. It's like, all right, let's talk about something different and, you know, just be collegial more than, and.
Yeah, I I could have just a good team though.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, that's a great idea, we used to have a holiday party over here. About doing that a few years back, but barbecue sounds, yeah, we could do that.
Barbecue is still partners.
Barbecue sounds like a great idea. Down, down like that. Last Friday, it was past Friday, Andy and I met with Rep Nate Sosa. Although he's not going to be our rep in the future after a few months, but we still had a meeting with him, drove him around town and, you know, showed him Lord Claims and basically talked a little bit about our urban boundaries. So it's just a, you know, expansions, it was a nice, a really nice visit and a great opportunity to educate him about Lord Claims. And again, although he won't be our rep in the future, it's still nice to, that he has an understanding of our community and he could always advocate for us on other levels. So that was all that I had to report. So, oh, and then on the third Wednesday, Bill and I are doing the OBI tour, and I could mention that last time, so. Any other input, questions, Councilor?
This is a call, observation I made today, a surprise, Mr. Walden's down near the corner, that building that had no roof month for Saturday, about noon, and tonight it was completely gone. I don't know what.
Are you talking about the barn, the barn?
The barn, yeah, it was that old wood, somebody wanted one of that very.
They were reclaiming all that stuff, all, all the wood and everything.
I can understand that, that's over a hundred years old.
Kind of sense.
Then it was going to happen, we had that clean water services picking that they talked about, did that ever happen?
Yeah.
Yeah. Maybe she called, what was that guy again, what did that name? And clean water services. Oh.
All right, any other comments or questions? None, I'll go ahead and adjourn our meeting tonight at seven thirty, thank you all.